Call this meeting of the Pittsburgh City Commission to order. Will you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll begin this evening off with public input. So if there's anyone here for public input this evening, I'll ask you to come forward and state your name at the podium. All right. If not, we will close public input and move into the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
If there's no items to consider, I move to approve.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve. Roll call vote.
Dinnehy.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
McNeigh.
Aye.
Muntzell.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving into the agenda. Item A. Consider the following. P&amp;L Development LLC loan modification request. Consider the recommendation of the Economic Development Advisory Committee, or EDAC, to modify the loan request approved by the governing body on August 14th, 2018, between the City of Pittsburgh and P&amp;L Development LLC to expand the potential uses of the loan proceeds to cover pre-construction expenses in addition to fixed infrastructure, with all other components of the loan agreement remaining unchanged.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To refresh your memory, this is a project we've already brought you. This is a $450,000 loan to support the Silverback Project. It will be repaid over five years at 3% interest. The only modification that we're bringing to you tonight is to expand the uses of those funds, not only for fixed infrastructure, but also pre-construction cost as well, which can include items like engineering estimating, land acquisition, or any other pre-construction cost. Nothing else about the project or the repayment terms has changed, but we would bring that modification back to you for your consideration tonight. This has been approved by the EDAC as well.
Are there any questions?
I'm just curious, why, like, is this something new that they're considering? Did they lose some other funding? Why didn't they ask for this initially?
No. Typically, with the original recommendation, there really weren't any strings attached to it. So typically, and Henry can correct me if I'm wrong, our standard contract language references fixed infrastructure. So when P&amp;L was reviewing those, they said, "Well, it was our understanding." Typically, here in Johnson County, where they do a lot of their projects, those pre-construction costs are considered infrastructure. So just to make sure that everyone was clear, we wanted to take it back through the proper process, the EDAC consideration, and obviously reconsideration by the City Commission as well. So nothing really changed about the project. It's just our understanding of what the funds could be used for.
I appreciate the fact that you're bringing this before us, so it's a transparent situation and it's all above board and everybody knows what this is about. I appreciate that.
That's the City Manager's direction, and I agree that it was a wise choice.
A wise man.
Be sure to note that on this evaluation at the end of the year.
My evaluation or his?
Are there any other questions on the item? There are none. I will seek a motion.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item B. Hometown Development Group payable/ forgivable loan request. Consider the recommendation of the Economic Development Advisory Committee, EDAC, to provide a payable/ forgivable loan, in the amount of $126,230 to the Hometown Development Group for the renovation of the building located at 1004 North Broadway to become the new location of Arnett Glass, with up to 10% of the total project value eligible for forgiveness if Arnett Glass creates five new full-time equivalent positions within five years and the remainder of the loan to be repaid over 10 years at 5% interest. Blake.
Mouthful, yeah. And, Mr. Mayor, I think it's important to point out that with these next two requests, we really have an opportunity to help two downtown buildings that need a lot of work. This first one, as you mentioned, is Hometown Development Group, which is made up of three local business investors, Bart Arnett, Nate Stahl, and Norman Miller. This project that we're talking about is at 1,004 North Broadway. This is a $300,000 project that, as you mentioned, would become the new home of Arnett Glass. So Hometown Development Group made a request to the EDAC. Before I get into that recommendation, I would like to call up Bart, and he can just tell you a little bit more about the project, and then I'll talk about the recommendation from the EDAC. Bart?
Hello. My name is Bart Arnett, owner of Arnett Glass. Arnett Glass just celebrated our first birthday here in Pittsburgh, Kansas. So, and looking forward to moving a location at 1004 North Broadway. The building, I don't know if you're familiar with the building, but it needed significant renovations. It's a lot, like a lot of buildings downtown here. The roof needed replaced, brick restored, tuck pointed and sealed. Interior infill, new offices and restrooms and things like that put in there. So I appreciate the consideration to help me out, and I guess I'll let you take it from here, Blake.
And I will mention that the project will create five new jobs over the next five years in addition to your three currently.
Yes.
Yeah. So the, with the combination of conventional financing and these gentlemen private funds, there was still a gap of $126,230. So the recommendation from the EDAC is to recommend approval of that loan with up to 10% of the total project value. Again, we expect it to be a $300,000 project. 10% eligible for forgiveness if they create those five new jobs over five years, and the remainder of the loan will be repaid over 10 years at 5% interest. So it's a combination of payable and forgivable. But that forgivable component would be based on the job creation over five years.
So was this unanimous decision of the advisory committee?
I don't have that in front of me, Commissioner.
Anybody from the advisory committee here that could tell me?
I know it was approved.
I believe it was.
I believe it was.
Unanimous?
I don't believe it was.
My question is...
I don't remember any dissent.
I have a question. The loan from the revolving loan fund is $126,000.
Mr. Hoskins, you want to address?
Did you abstain? I'm sorry to call out.
You abstained. You abstained?
Jim abstained from the vote.
How many other people were...
Jim, I'm sorry. Jim Hoskins, who I believe had a prior banking relationship with Bart, abstained from the vote.
Well, the question was $126,230, and 10% of that would be $12,623. That's what I would be in favor of. So that's where I stand on that tonight.
Okay.
I want to just be clarified, Chuck. You would approve the $12,000, not the 126. Is that what you're saying?
No.
Okay. So I don't understand what you're saying.
They asked for $126,230 from EDAC. And forgivable 10% of that amount would make it $12,623. That's what I approved tonight, my opinion. Forgive that amount, $12,000. The 10% of the money they got from the revolving loan fund.
Is that different from what's on the agenda?
He's saying 10% of the loan request rather than 10% of the total project value. I will say that we have a precedent of forgiving 10% of the total project value, similar to how we did the Frisco Event Center. I mean, that was a $200,000 project. So Larry was eligible to have $20,000 contributed into that project. The Butler's Quarter, Signet Coffee. That, with those projects, we use 10% of the total project value as the guideline, just for what that information is.
Oh, this is similar.
Yes, sir. This would be consistent with what we've done in the past.
I guess I stand corrected. If that's similar to what we've done in the past, I would be in favor of that.
So this, we might be getting off track here, but at some point, I would like to kind of understand the logic between the interest rates and, not necessarily loan and forgivable, but the time periods. So I don't know if that's a discussion for another evening, but just the logic.
We really, and I applaud the EDAC because they take each project on its own merit and its own needs. So there's really not a boilerplate for, you have to pay it here, or there this, or whatever the case is. Actually, the original recommendation was to ask Bart to repay this within five years as we went back to him and understood a little bit better that he's a new business. This is a big project for him. And the combination of repaying our loan on top of the GN Bank loan within that five-year timeframe might threaten to choke the business before it even gets started. So that was something that the EDAC took into account and reconsidered, and they figured that one of the ways that we could give would be to extend the length of the repayment, which actually will cost Bart more because he's paying 5% interest over 10 years now instead of five years. But I think he was willing to trade that flexibility in terms of being able to free up the cash flow on the front end a little bit more. Yes, you make a great point that we, yeah, we take every project...
Thumbs up. Did he articulate?
We take every project into account, the specific needs of that project.
I applaud that flexibility. I understand that, and I think it's important that we don't tie your hands too securely, that you have leeway. One thing I have an issue with is the fact that the city is putting into this project more than the bank. My question is, where does the city stand if this goes south? Are we above the bank in collection, or are we after the bank?
We typically, with our projects, we take a second position, but we also would have Mr. Arnett, all three of these gentlemen, sign a personal guarantee. So we would take a second position on this particular property, but all three would sign a personal guarantee.
Do we usually give, put out more money than they are able to get commercially?
Again, every project is different.
Do we usually?
Not in recent memory.
Okay, we do, okay.
And I believe the amount that the bank was able to loan was based on the appraised value of the building, if I'm correct. And that's not out of the ordinary when you're talking about a downtown building that has a lot of potential. But its value today is not nearly as much as it will be after these improvements are made.
And speaking of those improvements, should it become relevant, do they intend to follow the downtown design standards that we adopted for those renovations?
We're not really changing the facade at all. And we're putting up, you know, new windows and overhead doors and things like that, but we're not changing the facade.
Actually, that design thing does not really affect the way it looks. It's more about the quality of construction, if I'm not correct. Because I remember when Larry brought that before us, I was sorry that they didn't take that step to address facades in particular. And they just basically addressed the actual construction quality.
I think there was some facade recommendations. It's all recommendations, so.
Yeah.
Maybe not facade recommendations, but outlining the existing facades and how they could be in keeping. So, oh, here comes somebody who knows. Why are we talking?
Resident extra. How many people can we get?
But you're correct in that it's primarily infrastructure improvements, and several of the members on the Infrastructure Committee share the same sentiments you do, Commissioner O'Brien. They wanted to lay a foundation with those recommendations, and hopefully, as those become normalized in our community, build upon those to not only maintain the integrity, but also the visual appeal of those buildings. But like you said, it is a beginning step.
Are there any other questions on the item?
I'll move to approve.
I will.
Go ahead.
No, you're good.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item C. Nysler Forgivable Loan Request. Consider the recommendation of the Economic Development Advisory Committee, EDAC, to provide a forgivable loan in the amount of $25,000, 10% of the project value, to Dexter and Jennifer Nysler for the stabilization and sealing of the facade of the building located at 915 North Broadway, with the Nyslers to be given a five-year window to reach the total project value of $250,000.
Let me one more time. And I, Mr. Mayor, I think this is a great example of city employees really going above and beyond to improve our community. Dexter Nysler, who I think you all are familiar with, Dexter and his wife Jennifer. Dexter is in codes enforcement for the City of Pittsburgh. They have identified a downtown building that also needs significant work at 915 North Broadway. The total project value that they can commit to will be at least $250,000. It's probably going to actually exceed that because they're already $100,000 in just on the purchase, and it does need significant renovations. They have requested some assistance from the revolving loan fund to help offset their needs, to kind of underscore what Commissioner McNeigh said. The recommendation that I'll talk about is a little bit different than the one we just made for Bart, and I'll explain why that is. But I promised Dexter they didn't have to make a speech, but that it would be helpful for him to come up and just give a few thoughts on that building itself and what they plan to do with it.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Again, my name's Dexter Nysler. I had a big speech. Blake said it word for word. So I'll be happy to ask any questions you have. I am very fortunate in my job to work with people like Mr. Arnett, and I see a lot of good things happening in our downtown. I'm very fortunate that we get to, or that I get to, be on the side of the table to encourage this growth downtown. And really, somewhere along the way, we decided, my wife and I, that we just wanted to be a part of that.
I had intended to ask the same question about the design standards, but I, you're probably good with that, so.
Yes.
Dexter, I've talked with you a little bit one-on-one about this, and I really appreciate, especially you and your position, see pretty regularly what we're dealing with at the city and trying to move toward and what we don't want to move toward. So I very much appreciate you being willing to step up and take on a project of your own like this.
Well, thank you.
Both from the city and personally, like, I appreciate your effort.
Thank you.
That means a lot.
So the recommendation from the EDAC is still tied to that 10% of the total project value. How Dexter and Jennifer's project is a little different is there is a pressing structural issue with this building. As you look at it, it's pretty easy to see where the facade is actually pulling down. And there's a concern that with Bart's project, he will draw down at any one time 10% of what he's already spent on the building. So as he invests $200,000, he can draw down 20 from the city. We don't have that long with this project. So the difference in this recommendation would be that the city would go ahead and inject $25,000 into this project to begin with. It actually wouldn't even pass through Dexter and Jennifer's hands. It would go directly to the contractor to fix that issue that jeopardizes the rest of the building. But they are also committing to spending the full $250,000 over a five-year window. In five years, if they have not invested $250,000, they will repay the $25,000 that they're getting upfront, plus interest accrued over the five years.
I have a question. We have a couple of other buildings that requested money for waterproofing and stabilizing their exterior walls through efforts that the city did by demolishing a property on West Fifth Street. And is this $25,000 half of that cost, or is that the total cost?
I believe it's the total cost of what needs to be done, the stabilization that needs to be done right now.
Waterproofing. The other two buildings was only granted 50% of the total cost. I'm at that point on this project. I don't think we pick and choose who gets 50%, who gets 100%. I, my thoughts are, I'd give half of the $25,000 like we did the other two buildings.
But Chuck, those other buildings weren't investing $200,000 into their building.
How do you know how much they got in their buildings?
Well, I'm saying they didn't come to us with a project that they were investing into the building as it was, as opposed to Dexter, which is what he's doing right now.
They were just requesting money.
Money to fix the building, not to retrofit it in any way.
I understand, but that's where I'm at on this project.
Well, where I'm at on this project is the fact that I applaud Dexter and his wife, as well as Bart Arnett, for working on two buildings, so we don't have another calamity like we did with the Yoast property. These two individuals or these people who are doing this investment to relocate their business, you may think that it's costing us money, but I'll guarantee you, it didn't cost us nearly as much as tearing down the Yoast building.
I know what that cost, Patrick.
Yeah. And so I think it only behooves us to, I think it's, it's good, it makes good economic sense to invest this kind of money in these structures.
Dexter, what's the ultimate goal for that building in your mind?
Right now, that building is 11,000 square feet on the bottom floor. The ultimate goal is obviously to secure the building, to keep it standing for another 100 years. It's got great history. It's been around since 1898, I believe. The goal is to keep the building safe and secure. Hopefully, expand that 2,500 into the full 11,000 someday. It's great space. We see this all up and downtown Broadway where, I call it nesting. They use a little bit of area up front. The rest of the building is not used, the upstairs not used. We're selling our home. We're going to invest our own money into the home upstairs, move downtown. So we'll put our current house back on the market. Really, we're going all in.
We appreciate your risk and willingness to really put your money where your mouth is.
And it also has 10,000, I believe, 10,000 square feet of warehouse space.
11,000 total. It's 2,500 lease upstairs, or, I'm sorry, on the, up front by Broadway facing, and then 8,500 more in the back.
So that's something that we don't normally see in downtown buildings, so a lot of potential.
Are there any other questions on the item?
There's no other questions. I move approval.
A second.
It's been moved to approve and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dexter.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item D. Disposition of bid, Silverback Way Street Project. Approval of staff recommendation to award the bid for the construction of the new street, Silverback Way, which will provide access to PSU property and will connect East Centennial and the new Silverback Landing subdivision to Emory Sapp &amp; Sons Incorporated of Springfield, Missouri, based on their bid of $1,297,313.50. Cameron.
Commissioners and Mayor, thank you. Before you just the approval of the contract, we had quite a bit of response. You saw from the bid tab there. We feel very confident in the contractor and look forward to starting the project.
And you checked out this contractor and you feel confident in his expertise?
Yes, we do. They've also done work for us out at the airport here in the last two years, and they've got a good reputation.
Any other questions?
If there's no other questions, I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cameron. Item E. Ordinance number G-1289. Consider approval of ordinance number G-1289, amending section 82-141 of the Pittsburgh City Code, fixing rates and minimum charges for water service and providing an effective date of January 1st, 2019.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a 1% rate increase for water service, effective January 1st of 2019. As you recall, in the five-year financial plan, I usually build in a 1% annual increase in utility rates, and it was put into the 2019 budget and adopted that way as well. Asking for your consideration on this ordinance.
There's no questions. I move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item F. Ordinance number G-1290. Consider approval of ordinance number G-1290, amending section 82-141 of the Pittsburgh City Code, fixing rates and minimum charges for sewer service and providing an effective date of January 1st, 2019.
Again, this is the same methodology, only it's for sewer rates for the city, effective 1st of next year.
Jamie, while I was going over this, I couldn't, I mean, I'm aware that 1% doesn't sound like much today. But when we get down the road to 10 years, that's 10%. I would, I would hope that at some point in time, we can see our way clear. I mean, I understand what this 1% is doing for us. It's putting money for us to have for emergencies, that kind of thing. But as a retired person living on a fixed income, you know, over 10 years, that amounts to a whack, and I don't think that people's fixed incomes, the people who are on the lower end of the totem pole, I think they're going to have trouble with this. I just want to express that.
You know, to that point, we have the five-year forecast. We started in 2013 with Jamie's leadership putting that together. And so one of the things the Commission at that point decided was, we have $600,000 in reserves and we're supposed to have 2.4 million. And we have to build, we have to paint a three-quarters of a million-dollar water tower. And we want to do a quarter of a million dollars a year in line replacement. So there obviously has to be funding to go along with that. By the citizens and the Commission allowing us to do that, now we are at a time, and you bring up a great point, 1% is the method that you use rather than not doing anything for five or six years and then slamming everybody in the head with a 3% rate increase. But the other side of that is when you get to a point where we're at now, where you have $2.5 million in the reserve, thanks to not spending it, where you brought, you actually finished the painting of the water tower. Next year's five-year forecast, you will see us backing off on that now that we've achieved our minimum reserve level, now that we've achieved the large project that was facing us. I do think we always want to do the quarter million dollars in line replacement. But we will definitely take a look at that because it's a great point, because it's a tax increase. Whatever you want to call it, it's a tax increase. And it generates a lot of money.
I definitely understand what we're doing with it, and it's all good things. And the $2.5 million sounds like a lot of money in reserve, but if we had a big issue, that's there to take care of those big issues. And I applaud us for seeing that the funds are there to continue maintaining the services and the lines and all of that kind of thing. I mean, that's, that's part of what we're supposed to be about. And I'm glad for that, and I appreciate you thinking about the skipping it or whatever, lowering it for a time or two.
We will look at it for sure.
I understand what you're saying, Patrick, but also with that increase, the sewer lines are, some of them over 100 years old.
Sure.
The water lines are over 100 years old. And I think by replacing the water lines like we have, that helped lower our ISO rating to a, what is it now, Mike?
ISO 2.
2. So that helps decrease insurance costs. So it is, it is, I understand what you're saying, the tax increase, but it does go to taking care of some things that need replaced that we don't see because they're all underground, so.
Well, we see them every time we turn our faucets, for sure.
Indirectly. Are there any other questions on the item?
No other questions. I move to approve.
I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item G. Resolution number 1214. Consider approval of resolution number 1214, amending resolution number 1199, establishing the equivalent residential unit ERU rate and undeveloped property rate, and providing an effective date of January 1st of 2019.
Again, this is the raising the stormwater fee for one residential unit by 1% effective for 2019, as long the same lines as the water and sewer, It's along the same lines as the water and sewer, to keep the funds, the fund maintained so we can do these repairs and keep this drainage in the area adequate and so we don't have to do bond issues and things like that, we can just pay as we go.
Are there any questions on the item?
I move to approve, if there's no questions.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Item H, resolution number 1215. Consider approval of resolution number 1215 adopting and approving the proposed capital improvements program, or CIP, for the years 2019 through 2023.
Commissioners, this is our annual capital improvements plan for five years and beyond as we know them now. It's just a plan of stuff we know we need to be doing or, or it changes every year due to whatever else pops up and takes something, we have to push something back and move something up. This is laid out for roadways, bridges, aviation, pedestrian walkways and bikeways, buildings and recreational facilities. Then we got the utility, we got the five utility systems, they're in there as well. This, this plan for 2019 has approximately $64 million in needs over the next five-plus years. Of that 64 million, 28 million of it is thus far unfunded. We don't have a, a matching funding source as of yet. The 2019 is balanced though, per the budget. Does anyone have any questions on this? We've, we've done this, I think, for five years in a row now where we, you know, if you don't put it on paper, it never gets done, so.
I, I don't have any questions, but I, reading through this, I was impressed with the thought that obviously went into this and I was pleased that the staff is, is, is watching this and changing it as, as we go along. I mean, I, I, I think it really shows that we have a, a plan that we've thought about and I, I for one, I think it's terrific.
Yeah, shout, a shout out to Cameron and Matt and Ken Vogel for helping me put this all together.
Consider yourselves shouted out.
Are there any other questions regarding the item?
No questions, I move approval.
I second it.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded to approve, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes.
Thank you, this will be put on the city's website as well.
And by the way, I was certainly glad to see Wes Cleveland on that list.
I was glad to see Memorial upgrade.
Alright, item I, farmers market advisory board appointments. City staff is requesting the appointment of three members to the farmers market advisory board to fill vacancies created by the first term, first terms expiring for Dana Parsons and Charlie Phillips and the unexpired term of Darren Swartz expiring.
Good evening Commissioners and Mayor, I am Sarah Vaca, I'm here on behalf of Kim Vogel this evening. We have four people interested in the three positions that are gonna be open for farmers market advisory board. Each of the members have to be vendors at the market. Dana Parsons, Charlie Phillips and Darren Swartz have all served first terms and would like to be considered for a second term. And Megan Constantini is applying for her first term, are there any questions?
Alright, we don't have to vote again. Charlie Phillips, Megan Constantini and Darren Swartz will be, Swartz selected and
Just a move to approve of those three people.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. And item J, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board appointments. Consider staff requests to appoint Jeremy Carpenter and one new member to first terms as members of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board effective January 1st, 2019 and concluding on December 31st, 2022.
On this one, we are looking to fill the one vacancy that Jerry Waltrip left at that point and that is between Todd and Dwayne Vaughn, if you'll consider one of those.
Not as much information on these two as there were on the last ones.
I know. Is there anything you'd like to know?
Are either of them here?
Not that I am aware of, no.
There, I mean, I don't know, any recommendations?
Well, Todd Loveland served with us in the past and Jeremy Carpenter is actually filling one of his unexpired terms, but he's looking to come back. He brings some interest on the golf course, the skate park and things like that. Dwayne Vaughn is with New Hope and he brings a little different perspective with that, so either way, we'd be happy with either one.
This is only the second time I've been a part of this. Sorry. Is it, I, I think that it would be nice the next time that we do this for the people to come up and just like, and say a few things about themselves, is that standard or not standard?
Not standard.
It's not a lot to go on.
Not standard yet.
Yet, I mean, I like it when they submit a resume, that's good, but it like, in lieu of a resume, it would be nice to just hear something. Cuz I don't know anything about these two guys, you know, so.
Would you, I, I think that's, that's a good idea, we can make it happen, would you make it a critical if, if they can't show, I mean, do they have to be here to get a point?
Maybe if they couldn't just make like a resume or a statement.
I think we should, I mean, we can definitely reach out and start, you know, I mean, try to have them come in and that's a good idea.
I'm not opposed to that.
I mean, I don't know people either.
And we're more than happy to have a questioner or something that they can fill out too and help with that.
Todd Loveland would be the person that would be talking about himself this evening. The most votes, so Todd would be the person.
Okay, alright. Also, I need a motion for approval on the item.
I move to approve.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded to approve, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Thank you Sarah. Alright, non-agenda reports and requests, we have the bi-monthly budget review. Director of Finance Jamie Clarkson will provide the October 31st, 2018 bi-monthly budget review.
It's another two months have flown by, haven't they though? Okay, this is for the month of, through the month of October 2018. Approximately 83% of the year is, is, of the fiscal year has passed. Everything's still good, in the green, I have a few caveats. One is the property tax delinquency collections for this year were 4.9%. I had estimated 3.5% based upon the strong economy, so it's about 1.4% less than what I anticipated. That equates to about $93,000 less in, in property taxes we, we collected this year from the county. Sales tax.
That 93,000, we still are in line to get that at some point in time.
It'll be collected at some point in the future years, but yeah, like 2017, I think it was right at 3.5%. For whatever reason, 2018 is at 4.9%.
So does the county?
And that's county, that's countywide, it's not just us, yeah.
Any, any thoughts by administrators as to the, it's hard to rationale or figure it out?
Yeah, it's, you know, pure speculation.
Sure.
Sales tax, it's down 1.1% from same period last year. But if you recall, I mentioned that the, the state had given a, a vendor a tax break, a very large tax break on a, several purchases from 2017. So, you know, I got some more information from the state on that, so I went back and looked at, ran the numbers by taking that into account. And if they would've took the money back last year, instead of being at 5%, we'd have been, only been up like 3.5% last year and we'd been up about 2.5% this year at the same time, so. We just got that money, I guess, early, so to speak. But, you know, it kinda messes up your budgeting a little bit when they, when they do, that's the first time they've ever done something like that, that I'm aware of. General fund, it's sitting at about 5.8 million as of October. But all the big revenue sources for the year came in, so I've still got another five payrolls to go through plus all the operating, other operating costs. Utility fund's sitting at a 2.4 million, same thing with it, but overall, we're sitting at 14 million at the end of October for all the funds. Does anybody have any questions on anything?
Is that about average at this point in time?
Well, we finished last year at 12, 12 million, so I, I, I'm estimating we're gonna probably finish at about 11 point something million because we've had some expenditures this year that were, you know, like Block 22 to 750,000 and those kind of things that are like one-time deals, but they're really not part of the general fund or the utility. Well, and then we had like 750,000 for the, the water towers that, that we paid for as well, so.
I see that your, the gaming revenue is right, right above 29,000 a month, is that, does that stain?
Yeah, the gaming revenue is actually, the same periods in 2018 are stronger than they were last year. I'd budgeted 335,000 total this year and I'm probably gonna get around 340, 345, I think, so we're gonna be a little bit above on that. I'm hoping anyway, the way it looks now.
You better get out there.
Should be adjourned to go out there.
Just to wrap it up, Jamie does a fantastic job, obviously, we always joke, green's good, this whole thing's green. Will probably jumps out to Dawn's question a little bit, the far right-hand corner, uncovered cash, is that what we usually have? No, that's not what we usually have, six years ago, we had 8 million in that column. That number is important, but maybe the most important thing on here, just to look at and get a feel for how the city's operating is, we've brought in 37,700,000 and we've spent 36,300,000. So anytime we're, whatever our budget is, our budget is just a day in time, usually nine months before the year even starts. The reality is when you get into November and you're still pulling in that kind of money and making sure that you're always spending less than you bring in, you're going to be in a good place, so. That's the executive team, that's the department, that's people working smarter and not trying to blow through their budget and spend everything they have and we appreciate you guys giving us the ability to manage that and, and knowing that, quite frankly, since I've been here, the most important thing we've done other than safety is we have to get our reserves up and we've managed to do that and it's because of Jamie's, you know, Jamie's just a grouch in the staff meetings and everybody laughs about it because whatever happens, Jamie's over there tapping his pen going, how's this gonna affect the money? And it's because that question gets asked 400 times a year is why those two numbers are always in the right proportion, so. I didn't want that to just get, it just, green's not his favorite color, it just happens that he is a, he's on us pretty good to make sure we stay under there, so good job Jamie, appreciate your work.
I'm glad he's always smiling when he comes here.
Oh, he does it with a smile, but he does it.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you Jamie.
Thank you. As far as non-ag, uh, non-agenda reports and requests go, Darren, I believe you have some information regarding the Fifth Street property?
I actually have three things that I wanna run through. The first, if you don't mind, I asked Cameron to give us an update on the Quincy and the
Okay.
paving, there's two paving projects which specifically are still hang, and since it snowed, I thought perhaps we should give an update on paving before the year's over, so thanks Cameron.
Loveland's, our contractor that's doing our 2018 street improvements, which is, majority of that's the milling overlay. They did the milling there on Quincy Street on October 11th, so just about a month ago. After the milling, they came in and they did the concrete valley gutter there at Walnut Street. As you recall, that was beat to all get out and was a chronic headache, I know, for the streets crew. And we closed the street there, that intersection on the 26th of October. And due to weather and the contractor's schedule, he's not been able to get back there to do the asphalt overlay and we've kept that intersection blocked just so that we can make sure that we have the best strength and best condition of that concrete gutter once we have the street paved and back in service. We've been in constant contract, contact with the contractor and he says that he will be here this Friday and Saturday, 16th and 17th in order to go back and they will do the Quincy Street paving first and they'll go over and finish off countryside.
When is that, this Friday?
This Friday and Saturday, yes. Think they'd hope to be here earlier, but the temperatures right now, if they put it down before that, we just won't get a good product and won't have any life to it.
So what, you said Quincy's first, what time do they start on that because there'll be buses and stuff going that way? So again, let them know that the street will be closed?
We get a little bit closer, we'll know for sure, but usually, was it, Sarah does a real good job about letting the public as well as the school district and others know.
Anyway, it's getting late, not in the night, but in the season and is it 40, is 40 the number, what's the degrees?
I usually wanna have at least 40 and rising and with us having several days of it being below freezing, we'll make sure that that base is nice and warmed up, so with it, lows being around 30 or below up till, I believe, Thursday night, it wouldn't be prudent for us to try and pave before then.
I know a lot of us will be, certainly would be glad to see that come to pass. And I know you live on the street, so you, so you do it too.
Trust me, if I could will it to be, it'd already be done. Any other questions for me?
Thanks Cameron.
Thank you.
Cameron?
Second, the so we need your recommendation, your thoughts on, I've, I put a timeline together. In July, we signed an agreement with Rise Development for the vacated spot between Fifth Street and the insurance company. We extended the deadline at the request of the developer a couple of times, on October 4th, we had a phone call. I think I reported back to you about that, he said he was, should have us a check by the first week of November and everything else was on track. October 24th, Henry and I and Quentin had another phone call and agreed that basically, we were just gonna call today, the day. Today has come and gone at 5 o'clock, we, we, I, I, we're just not at a point where I think this developer is gonna move on this property. The signs that he was going to move on it would be that he would have already given us the check and taken the title. It's been two and a half months, so really what we're coming back to you today is asking how you would like to proceed. It was, it's a commission's decision, it always has been. Obviously, it's our recommendation to tell you with any development, what we think is in our best interest and I'm telling you today, I think it's in our best interest if we move on to another option. So with that being said, I'm looking for feedback on how to proceed.
Have we been in contact with Fifth Street at all about this?
They've asked several times if we have the signed agreement, which They've asked several times if we have the signed agreement, which we don't have, so.
Are they, are we to assume they would still be interested?
I think they're gonna get the first, I think they should get the first phone call.
I agree.
Assuming you guys accept that I think we need to move away from the, the chosen developer, and then, yeah, I mean, we've got a, an offer from them, it's July, so, you know, it's several months old, but I think the first thing would be to go back to them and say, hey, here's, here's the offer you had, where are we? And obviously, if we can negotiate a development agreement with, with them, we'd be happy to do that. If not, worst-case scenario, you know, we would just, we have a land bank now, we would just put the property in the land bank and, and look, look for opportunities through that.
That's what I, I mean, it's unfortunate that the, the, you know, the, the people with the initially better proposal didn't follow through, but I, I think that Fifth Street also had a really good proposal, and I, I would certainly say, go back and, and yeah, talk to them or bring them here.
I agree that it's time to move on. They've, they've had plenty of time.
Well, we will contact Fifth Street, not this evening, but tomorrow.
Right now, I'll stop by.
There's a bar there. Fifth Street, then the casino, okay?
Then the casino, in that order. Yeah, I appreciate it, you know, I mean, two and a half months is a long time.
Yeah.
And I think whether we're, we're looking at restaurants or hotels or housing developments or in this case, commercial space downtown, two and a half months is, is long enough to, to show if you're, if you're really interested in doing it. If not, we need to move on, so Fifth Street's hopefully chomping at the bit, and if not, we'll come back to you. We will let you know at the next meeting either way, what we stand, and hopefully, that we're working on an agreement. Thanks.
Sounds good.
Okay. And finally, just, I'm, I'm watching this meeting take place, we keep looking up at the screen, Jamie's got his chart, and I'm praying that people at home can see it. This room is going to get a significant facelift after the last meeting in December. Jay and his group have spent at least six months trying to find out the right vendor and the right configuration, with the idea being that it's 2018, it's about to be 2019, and all of you have, I don't know if you've all missed a meeting, but if any of you have missed a meeting and participated by phone, there's not a lot of participation going on, I don't think you can see anything that's happening, it's probably hard to hear. So with that, I'd invite Jay up to maybe give us two minutes on, on what you can expect, just more for the, I think you guys may have seen something on this, if not, I apologize, but I think it's important for the people at home to understand that our goal is to improve your experience, and there's some technologies that allow us to do that, and we're gonna do it between the last meeting in December and hopefully, first meeting in January, so, you know, how good we are with construction right now, I'm sure.
Yeah, that's, actually, the proposal we have on the table with a couple of different vendors is, is, is pretty extensive, I mean, we'll be digging into the floor and wiring and things like that. Primarily, there, there's some, obviously, this building was built 10 years ago, it has been kind of pieced together technol, with, with the technology that was there at the time and added to a little slightly, these, these are original cameras, low resolution, those kind of things. We can add a great deal more of functionality to this room, particularly when it comes to sound. I think we have some issues with the sound and how the sound is distributed around and how it's picked up. There's much more sophisticated microphones now that we can add, and we'll be adding depth and improvements to the sound, the ability, if you ever look at what Ryan's doing in that back room right there, it's, he's using a lot of old technology back there, so we're gonna upgrade what, what's going on back there to make it a little bit easier to transition to the, 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 this, the recordings and what's going on here live to, to our feeds, to our streams. So it's just gonna be something that is, that's kind of a refresh. We're also looking at the same time about a reconfiguration of, of the front here. Obviously Darren can't see Dawn, so.
At least one and a half Commissioners usually.
Yeah, but, but it is a, it is, it is, and we, of course, this is also a courtroom, so we have to be, you know, conscious of what the, the judges are interested in as well, too, so there, there's a lot of things at play here, but we have two really good vendors that are, they're kind of competing for us with this. It's not cheap, but it is, it is something that you would expect to do after a building's 10 years old, so.
Anyway, that's all, okay?
I'm sorry, it's a different subject, Jay. Rouse?
You wanna talk about Ra, you wanna know what's going on with Rouse?
Yes, I'd like to know what's going on with Rouse.
Well, Rouse is...
Nobody's interested.
Nobody's interested.
I, I know, Rouse is under construction wholly, I guess is how I would say it. I live right there, they've, our goal is still two-way traffic, I'm gonna turn it over to Cameron real quick, but since I live there, I think it's worth saying. The one thing I can tell you is it's, we've done everything to neutralize the weather's impact on Rouse, but that doesn't mean it's not going to have an impact anyway. We've got a crew out there that's working a lot of Saturdays, they're working in the cold today. Basically, what they're working on is pouring, they've gotta pour a continuous surface from one end of the project to get to the other end of the project that's currently not under construction, so we can move traffic two-way. I'm proud of the work they're doing, I've heard from the neighborhood, there's a lot of specifics about approaches, the road is much lower than it was, that's why you don't build roads last, you build them first and then build developments to the road, because right now, you've got elevation issues, but we've got a great guy on the job every day, Jacob, he's out there, he's part of that crew, he's there, he's inspecting, he's reporting, we're taking issues as we get them. The people in the neighborhood have been very good and very patient, but this is not a small project, we are right in the middle of this project, and as you know, it is November, so. Cameron, what am I missing, or?
We're still on targeting the end of November, trying to get back to the two-way traffic there. They've got three different areas, they're trying to finish wrapping up, preparing today. If not, they'll be working on that tomorrow. The plan, I believe, is to pour on Thursday those sections there. They'll have to drop back after they pour those, they'll be preparing their transition and get to the two-way traffic, they'll have to drop back to the very south end in order to be able to pour from where goes back to the existing two-lane traffic up to Amber in order to be able to get what, enough width to be able to get two-way all the way through there. That is still what they're looking at, again, weather can always throw a hiccup in there, but they've definitely put the manpower on it here to try and push through to make that happen.
Since we're talking about Rouse, this is the north end now, right over the Josiah Overpass going south, there's this, I don't know, eight, it looked like eight to 10-foot piece of asphalt. I've talked to Lonnie Wells about it, it's a big bump in there, and I thought they might have addressed that when they was fixing sections of the concrete, but I don't know if you know what I'm talking about, Cameron, but...
I'm not 100% sure if that's inside the city or outside.
Okay, alright.
That's...
I bet Matt knows.
Yeah. Hey, Josiah's a county.
Well, it's, it's...
It's on the, yeah, it's on the line, and it's in the southbound lane, west side.
Right. That's the county's? Okay.
Yeah, the Josiah Overpass is actually the county.
Why is it asphalt there? Do you have any idea?
I know, that's before my time. But it, our city limits comes down Atkinson.
Well, I've been asked about it several times, and it's a county issue?
Yeah. So it, the city limits comes down Atkinson, jogs around the west side of Josiah and ties back into, kind of jogs around railroad tracks and zip-a-doo's through there, but picks back up on the other side of Atkinson, so.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay.
Don, how are we doing on South Rouse? Is that more than?
That's, yeah, I mean...
You know, honestly, they are working their tails off, but it is, I hope everybody can appreciate, I, I know we seem picky, I know, I know we're building a million and a half dollar road to here, and I know we're, we're always working on, you know, what's the next money, what's the next pile of money we can get so we can fix another road. The roads are everything in this community, and you have to build them first. If you don't build them first, nobody did anything wrong on this road, other than the order. I mean, you just have a huge, if you look at the elevation, it's three feet down, I mean, I've never seen a road that was that far off, but that's what happens when you turn a county road with no drainage into a mainstream three-lane city street. It's, it's a huge inconvenience, and, and I'm not driving four miles on that detour, but a lot of my neighbors are, and they're being extremely patient, and they need to know that we appreciate it, and that this is going to be worth their weight, and, and we are doing everything. This is a state project, and Cameron and his guys are doing everything to make sure that it gets done as soon as it can, because as critical as it is to do, it is a huge pain in the butt, and it's a mess over there right now. Good job, Cameron.
Thank you.
Keep it up, that's all we had.
Maybe lastly, I think it might be worth noting that we have a new official police chief standing in the back there, Chief Nargis, so congratulations on that, sir. Look forward to seeing all that you'll be able to do for the city in your new position, well, the position that you've basically been doing, but now officially are doing. Alright, if there is nothing else to come before the commission, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
I got a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion passes.
I know.